Mr. Rice? Is there more silent reflection?
Oh, Lieutenant Scott O'Neil. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk called out of the city council meeting of November 29th, 2010. Take a roll call.
Council Cameron.
President.
Council Con.
President.
Council Conan.
President.
Council Darrell.
President.
Council Earl.
President.
Council Harquist. Assistant Two-Ninth, Council Herschel.
President.
Council Hutchinson.
President.
Council Rives.
President.
Council Jones.
Once again here.
And Council President O'Brien.
President. Late file items.
There are none, Mr. President.
Public comment. Thank you. Kim Gooden, 54 Hill Street.
Good evening. I would like to ask the council to support the proposal for designated off-leash areas. The goal of this proposal is to balance the needs of the estimated 40 percent of the City of Newburyport's residents who own a dog with the needs of residents who do not own a dog. The proposal is based on successful programs of shared use of parks and open spaces in Brookline, Cambridge, Portsmouth, Portland, to name a few. It provides legal opportunities for dog owners to allow their dogs to be off-leash but only in designated areas at specified times and subject to applicable rules. It presents an efficient and equitable resolution to the sometimes competing needs for the use of the city's limited parks and similar public spaces on the part of Newburyport's tax-paying voting residents. We hope you will look at the information carefully and consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Sherman?
Thank you. Good evening. I also am here to request that you support the designated off-leash proposal. It just involves four different locations in Newburyport: Cashman Park, Mostly Woods, the mall, Bartlett Mall, and Marches Hill. And again, it was based on a lot of research that we've conducted from March through August, and the Parks Commission has reviewed it and endorsed it, and we hope that you will endorse it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. Move on to the consent agenda.
Which consists tonight, Mr. President, of the approval of the minutes for November 8th, 2010. There are four transfers. The first transfer is from the Assessors' Reserve Appropriation for the Assessor $600 to Other Supplies. That's in for approval. Second transfer is Assessors' Department Valuation Processing, $1,200, to Other Supplies. Third transfer is in for approval also, DPS Highway, $80,000, to Fuel and Oil. Fourth transfer is from Mayor's Department Budget Contingency, $3,914.76, to GIS, Geographic Info Systems. All four in for approval. There are three communications. First is in for approval, renewal of second-hand motor vehicle license, Newburyport Auto Brokers. Second communication is the Dogs Off-Leash Task Force with proposed ordinance to refer to Neighborhood and City Services. Third communication is the appointment of the Deputy Director of Emergency Management to be received and filed. It is a notice from the Marshal to the Mayor of the appointment. There are three, I'm sorry, there are four appointments, three appointments and one reappointment. First is E. Douglas Bowler, 8 Court Street, to the Fruit Street Local Historic District Study Committee, to expire 11/1/2013. Next two are Reserve Police Officers. They have no expiration. They, we are confirming a civil service appointment. First is Gregory Frederick Whitney, 23 Low Street, Newbury, Mass. Second is Robert A. D'Amio, 95 Lime Street, Newburyport, Mass. The reappointment is Jane Bagley Holiday, 11 Chestnut Street, to the Commission on Disability, but to expire 11/1/2013. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
There are six transfers. Transfer number five, Mayor's Department. Transfer from Free Cash, $200,000. Transfer to Fund Balance, $200,000. Says Mayor's FY 2011 budget proposal was based on the use of free cash as a funding source for the budget. Majority vote of the city council is required.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Transfer six, Mayor's Department. Transfer from General Stabilization Trust Fund, $185,000. Transfer to, transfer from Trust Funds, $185,000. Mayor's FY 2011 budget proposal included the use of stabilization funds to help balance it. Remaining balance in the stabilization fund will exceed 5 percent of the general fund budget, which is within current city guidelines.
Mr. President.
Second.
Discussion. Council Jones.
Question, Mr. President. The trust funds for which the $185,000, can I, can I have an understanding of where that money can come from?
Uh, it's been a portion.
That money is coming from the stabilization trust fund. It's just appearing in the transfer form going into another trust fund, but it will be general fund revenue. So, it's essentially from stabilization into general fund.
And that has an account number? Bill, could you?
Yeah.
Just in addition to that, the stabilization fund has been built up over several years, eight years that I know of, where free cash has been transferred in from various times to give the city some stability in its financial management. It's also something that the bond rating agencies look favorably upon and has been a main ingredient for the bond rating upgrade from A to AA in the last couple of years.
One of the questions people had, we're going for general stabilization, why isn't it going to certain accounts, not just this account, and then we'll have to take money out of that account to put it where we need it?
Well, it goes into the general fund revenue account, which means, just like real estate property taxes, just like fees for marriage licenses, parking fines, all that money goes into the general fund revenue account and is used to fund all the rest of the budget items. This, they're not special revenues. It's one big general revenue, general fund revenue account. So it goes in to fund a little bit of everything.
So why doesn't this go into general revenue fund? It says transfer from trust fund.
Well, it's just, that's just the terminology, but it goes into the general fund revenue account. It's a trust fund. The stabilization fund is a trust fund, and as a result, it's called that name.
Council Jones.
But what trust funds does the money actually come from, and how was the money from, how was this $185,000 generated?
Okay. It's coming from the stabilization fund. Stabilization fund is like a savings account, a reserve account where money is put aside for, some use the term rainy day account, for an emergency, or to be used however the city council and the mayor determines to be appropriate. It's something that is built up over a period of time to provide stability within the city's financial management system. So, the money comes from the general fund. It comes from a variety of sources, primarily from free cash. Free cash is transferred into the stabilization fund, where it stays. Free cash, at the end of the fiscal year, free cash goes to zero and is recalculated again, depending on the financial situation within the city, whether the revenues were adequate in accordance with projections, what the expenditures were. There are other factors as well, but if there is money available, then it can be transferred into the stabilization fund, where it stays there, gains interest, and doesn't go away at the end of the fiscal year. So it can be built up over a period of several years to be used in the case of an emergency or, again, as the mayor and the city council deems appropriate. Takes two-thirds vote to take this out of the stabilization fund.
I think confusion is the name of the account it's going into.
Yeah.
Transfer from trust fund.
In our unit system, that is the way we have to put it.
There's nothing in there now, correct?
Pardon me?
There's no money in there now? The transfer, this account transfer from trust fund?
It's going into the general fund revenue account. That's the terminology that's used to put it into that account.
Why doesn't it say general revenue? That's all, that's all.
We could call it that.
That's what's confusing.
We could call it that.
That's the confusing part to people. I can see their faces. It's not saying general revenue. This is saying transfer from trusts.
It's a transfer from a trust fund.
I think the brightest light, Bob, but that's not what they're saying here.
That's the way it's in the, in the unit system.
Counsel, go on.
What are you going to spend this $185,000 on?
A little bit of everything, because it's going into the, you have to understand how this works. Okay, there's a big part of money called general fund revenues.
But let me finish the thought then. How did you come up with a figure $185,000?
That's what the mayor determined would be needed in order to alleviate cuts in the budget and to fund the things that were presented.
We see that list of things that might go to fund? It's the, uh...
No, it's a little bit, again, it's...
Because it's kind of big.
Yeah. There were things put back into the budget. I think during the deliberation process, there were some things that the council recommended be put back into the budget. There were some things that the mayor came back and recommended be funded, and these funds were basically in order to do that.
Counsel O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Squillist, but the council, we just approved a transfer of $200,000 going from free cash to, call it Fund Balance. Essentially, Fund Balance is the same thing, general fund revenue account, correct? So this $200,000 plus $185,000 equals the contingency that the mayor alluded to during the spring's budget talks.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Transfer seven.
Mayor's Department. Transfer from Green Initiatives Reserve Appropriation, $20,000. Transfer to Mayor CHMM Project, $20,000. Transfer required to fund energy conservation building improvements to the Customs House Maritime Museum, which is owned by the city.
I move to refer to planning and development.
Second. Discussion. Counsel O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, was a confusing transfer once I looked at it, and then I spoke to a number of city officials, and I became even more confused. What has all done to... I'm new in the council, I can say that. What have all done to, Mr. President, is, according to the Assessors' database of owners, the museum is located at 25 Water Street. 25 Water Street is owned by the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. If we go forward with this transfer, are we approving the NRA to take $20,000 of the city's funds? I don't know. I have no problem with the intent of the, this grant transfer. There is a lease that is currently in existence between the Customs House Maritime Museum, which is the tenant, and the NRA, which is the owner. And I just have some questions. According to the museum director, Mark Gaye, there is no rush to having this be approved. He'd like to have building improvement sooner than later. I suggest we move it into a, into a committee. I suggest planning and development as perhaps the best one, and, and committee can take a look at it.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all well and good. I think it belongs in budget finance, so I, and to be honest with you, I'd rather not do it jointly. It's hard enough getting people together, three council, councilor committees, so that would be my preference.
Withdraw from planning and development and refer to budget finance.
Counsel, I can move to budget finance. Any further discussion? Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, we're, we're seeing the failure to fully define what exactly the NRA is and does. This is a very interesting situation when I understood that the city owned the Customs House. That wasn't my recollection of how things had been in years past, and I think it's high time that this council take a long, serious look at the NRA, its charge, its charter, and its, and its necessity to continue in its present form. And I know I've spoken about this several times before you, but once again, we're looking at a situation where it seems the NRA is the tail that wags this dog, and no disparaging dogs in this, in this setting, because we'll be hearing a lot about them, I'm sure, but in this instance, I'm not about to be wagged by them.
Yeah, just an observation. To the best of my knowledge, unless someone presents evidence to the contrary, the NRA is a passive participant in this discussion. They have nothing to do with it, other than the fact that they happen to own the building that was cited, perhaps incorrectly, I'm not sure, to be city-owned in the message by the Customs House. So I, I think frankly, to lay this at the feet of the NRA is inappropriate and unfair. You criticize them for a lot of things, but this is not one of them. This is, it seems to be an honest attempt to help weatherize a building that is owned by the city. Which entity of the city is, is a fair question, as Counsel Herschel has raised, and this seems to me more a procedural issue than anything else, and it's worth sorting out the procedure and budget finance and seeing how funds might be transferred appropriately. Let's leave the NRA out of it, except for the fact that they happen to be the owners of this land, and I'm glad Counsel Herschel was here to point that out.
If I was to have a high and low committee, it's true that they own it, as you said. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Return to budget finance. Three transfers left. Transfer number eight. Eight, nine, and 10, they all go into the salary program assistance. Want to take them collectively? We can, if something...
Motion to take flag to lift.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Take them collectively. Read them all. Thank you. Would you like them read, Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of, yes, I have a point of order, clarification. Can we act on transfers collectively, or must we act on them individually? And I'm disappointed that I'm completely ignorant on a mask, but for clarification from the department.
Counsel President? I would say, yes, you could. There are revolving accounts, drug-free accounts, all same votes, majority votes. I don't see why you couldn't. Counsel Jones?
We, we vote collectively on the consent agenda, so why would we not be, why would we be precluded from looking at these in total?
Who's the second? Transfer number eight, Youth Services revolving account, $4,779.49 to Youth Salary Program Assistant. Transfer number nine, Youth Services Drug-Free Communities Grant, $12,000, to Youth Salary Program Assistant, $12,000. And lastly, transfer number 10, Youth Services revolving account, Middle School Drop, $12,615.38 to Youth Salary Program Assistant, $12,615.38. Those are the three transfers. Motion, motion approved.
Second motion.
Any... Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Three transfers carried. Move on to orders.
The first order, Mr. President, is dated November 29th, 2010, that the city council of the City of Newburyport votes to approve a net reduction of $556,779 in the FY 2011 Sewer Department budget. This reduction will revise the original FY 2011 budget appropriation from $5,745,817.26 to $5,189,038.26, and is reflected in the following line items within the FY 2011 Sewer Department budget. Sewer debt principal account, $5,910, reduced by $634,47.16, and the sewer debt interest account, $5,915,0, increased by $77,268.16. Said reduction is required due to an adjustment in debt service expenses for the wastewater treatment facility that was estimated to occur in FY 2011 but will not take place until FY 2012. Submitted, Counsel Edward C. Cameron.
Motion to refer to budget finance. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Order number two.
Dated November 29th, that the city council of the City of Newburyport, on behalf of the city, accepts with gratitude the donation of $85,066 from the Gayden W. Morrow Charitable Foundation, funds to be used as indicated in a letter to Mayor Don B. Holiday from Gayden W. Morrow Trustee, dated November 16th, 2010. Submitted, Counsel Edward C. Cameron.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
And again, the W. Morrow Charitable Foundation, that has been many, many years, and it's always money well needed, and we will get something from the mayor on where this $85,000 is going to go. I think they sent a letter on where it's going to go, what part. I haven't seen that yet, so, thank you.
Order, order number three. Counsel Cronin.
I move that we suspend the rules so you can take the report on this order.
Public safety, federal home rule petition. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Mr. President, in front of us is a couple of, a couple of items that are scattered through the agenda here. Basically, this is a committee item that's been in committee for a goodly period of time, January 11th of this year, to be exact. What we are asking to do at this, at this juncture is to make a motion, I'm going to move to approve as read by our clerk, and then pending delivery to Senator Bedore and Representative Costello, on a affirmative vote, if it gets approved, we can move forward with our civil service ordinance as well.
Dated November 18th, that the city council of the City of Newburyport hereby petitions the General Court for special legislation in the form set forth below, provided further that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the city council approves amendments to the bill before enacting by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general objectives of this petition. The Act states as follows, "An act exempting the positions of fire chief and city marshal in the City of Newburyport from the civil service law, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows, Section 1. Notwithstanding any general or special law of the contrary, the positions of fire chief and city marshal in the City of Newburyport shall be exempt from Chapter 31 of the general laws." Section 2. Section 1 shall not impair the civil service status of the persons holding the positions of fire chief and city marshal in the City of Newburyport on the effective date of this act. And Section 3. This act shall take effect upon passage. Submitted, Counsel Edward C. Cameron.
Discussion. Is that motion approved?
Just so the rest of the council understands the progression here, what we're obviously attempting to do with this order is to put in place a system in the, in the city that collectively with the mayor, the professional staff of the mayor, and the city council come up with a workable way in which we would assess a candidate for either position, and then collectively make an agreement on that in lieu of the existing civil service testing procedure that we have right now.
And it came out of committee three to nil in favor. Counsel, do I, I mean, Mr. President, do I take that as a standing motion approved and instructing me to deliver it to Senator Bedore and Representative Costello, seconded by Counsel Cameron? Thank you. Any further discussion? Marshal, do I say anything? It's up to you. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call. This is on the aforementioned motion approved. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Darrell.
Yes.
Counsel Earl's.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist, he's still not here. Counsel Herschel.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rives.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Any yes, one absent, all in pass. Ordinance number one.
Ordinance number one. Second reading. Ordinance entitled An Ordinance to Amend an Ordinance. Chapter 13, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 4, Division 6, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Section 13-180, Resident Parking. Delete. Section 13, 180C, subsection 2. No residential parking permit shall be issued to a person who has exclusive access to off-street parking space within the residential parking permit zone. amend to read, subsection G. Designation of residential parking permit zones, subsection 1A, Zone 2. Include the following streets between Fair and Federal, Temple Street and Spring Street. Delete G2, add a new G2, Zone 1. Includes the following streets, a portion thereof designated. A, Arlington Street, both sides from Highland Avenue to the northerly end of those properties known as 23 and 24 on each side of the street. B, Lafayette Street, both sides from Highland Ave. to the northerly end of these properties known as 18 and 25 on each side of the street, respectfully. C, Cherry Street. D, Hill Street. E, Britches Street. Jointly submitted, Councilors Robert J. Cronin and Gregory D. Earl.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Counsel Cronin.
Just as a reminder to the council, this is acting on a promise that we made to the Hill Street, that big neighborhood, as far as mitigating some traffic issues in that neighborhood due to the MBTA law and other restrictions put on to other, other streets of that area.
Counsel O'Neal. Roll call, please. This is motion approved, second reading. Ordinance number one, Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Darrell.
Yes.
Counsel Earl's.
Yes.
Counsel Herschel.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Rives.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Order number two.
Ordinance number two is the ordinance referred to by Counsel Cronin. It is three pages in length. It is an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Administration. Chapter 1, Administration, Article 5, Departments, Division 1, generally add the following. It adds a new section 2-316, which deals with the appointment of the city marshal and fire chief. 2-316, which deals with the appointment of the city marshal and fire chief. Motion to approve. Discussion? Counselor Cronin.
This would just follow the, the order that we discussed a little bit earlier, and if I could make a friendly addition to the, to the motion to approve as read and instruct the clerk to, subject of approval of Order 3 by the great General Court, and once it is affirmed by them, that we would then publish this and move forward with it on a second reading.
And if I may suggest enwaive any necessary rules conflicting therewith.
Very well said.
Yeah. Second. So I think it is a motion to approve, subject to Order Number 3 being approved by the General Court, and I'll withhold advertisement until there, and also waiving any rules conflicting therewith, meaning our city rules. So seconded? Was seconded by Counselor Rogers. Counselor Earls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Cronin, before I approve this vote, could I ask, has the Public Safety Committee compared or reviewed this proposed ordinance to other communities and, and other, other language outside of Newburyport? Considering that the city today does not have a human resource department, I question how much language we want to put into a law without having, if you will, HR officials on staff, who would be, you know, enforcement of the law.
Counselor.
It's a very good question. What we have, what we have done is through Andrew Flanagan's work specifically, that we've tapped into the MMA, Masked Municipal Association, and taken boilerplate language from them, that has been accepted throughout the state, and we've taken, is that wrong?
Any further discussion? Roll call. On ordinance number two, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsorg.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
And yes, one absent. That is the end of our regular agenda, I believe. Any other? Budget Finance.
Mr. President, motion to remove collectively items 3, 4, and 5 from committee.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will vote present.
Thank you. Mr. President, motion to approve collectively transfers 3, 4, and 5.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Cameron.
Mr. President, just at, at the risk of killing trees, I think this will be a little easier, I'm going to give you all a, just some context. What I'm painting out is a comparison of the union salary adjustments over the last four or so fiscal years. I think this context is useful, just so we really understand what we're voting on. And this is the mayor's memo from a couple, actually from almost two months ago, actually let me take that one down, regarding the Teamster contract. So these first three transfers are related to the Teamster Administrative Assistance Contract. This has been in committee since early October. This memo is just to refresh your memories about what the mayor is proposing in the transfer. Essentially, mayor's office negotiated with this bargaining unit. The mayor feels that there were good give and take on both sides. This union had, had a 0% increase in last fiscal year, 2% the year before, that was 2009, 1 and 1/2 each of 2008 and 2007. There are 17 people in this union, and the, you know, collectively the transfers fund those, those particular positions. So this would be going, $11,000 would be going from treasurer's salary, this is from not filling a position, and would cover parts of an assistant in the assessor, two assistants in the assessor's office, the auditor's assistant, two positions there, parking enforcement, city clerk assistant clerk, the admin, person for the city clerk's office, admin assistant in health, and two in planning, and the mayor's executive secretary. So in exchange for the concessions that are listed in that memo, the mayor felt that a 2% wage increase just for this fiscal year, so this would be FY 11, the contract language is in effect for the full three years, and there would be, you know, a reopening for fiscal years 12 around the, you know, any, any wage increase for those, for those particular years. But for this year, we're being asked to fund through these three transfers that increase to, of 2%.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the, in the change of language on the CBA, there's discussion about merit-based raises, and I question whether or not these transfers reflect projected merit-based raises, or whether or not these are going to be something in addition to and brought back before specifically for our approval.
These aren't any merit-based raises, these just cost of living that will be blanket applied across the Teamster Administrative Assistance. There is a piece in there that talks about a performance evaluation system, which would require employees in the bargaining unit to meet with either their department head and the mayor's office to discuss their performance. If resources were available, they could be eligible for a merit raise. But what it does in the interim gives department heads an opportunity to evaluate their employees. This is a practice that has never been done uniformly in the city. As I explained, the budget and finance, having several contracts open at the same time is a challenge, but at the same time it presents an opportunity in that we can develop some consistent practices across staff, across bargaining units. So there'll be no, we will not be coming back this year asking for a merit raise to be funded.
District, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will vote present.
Mr. President, motion to remove collectively items 7, 8, and 9 from committee.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, motion to approve transfers 7, 8, and 9.
Second. Discussion?
Just to give a little bit more information, I'd like you to just file these away for future use and, 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 you've got this number as you open this. So this is the ASME contract, and then this came to committee in, at the last council meeting. And similar, you know, similar negotiations around some of the items included in here is, you know, again, my, my understanding, this, this happened obviously separately from the Teamsters Administrative Contract, but, you know, talk about a labor management committee would be formed, and there were some modifications to sick leave, and again, as, as the mayor's assistant alluded to, the Labor Management Committee would, would look at the implementation around annual performance reviews. My understanding is that city employees by and large are not reviewed on an annual basis, and I think in, you know, those of us who work in places where you do get an annual review, it's, it's a helpful thing, I think, for both a supervisor and an employee to really get an idea of how you're doing each year, and if you don't get that feedback and that's not institutionalized, I think, you know, any organization suffers, so I commend the mayor's office and the union for, for embarking on, on that discussion. So essentially, you know, similar, you know, I think this was, you know, good give and take on both sides. This particular union, ASME, is the, is the largest city union other than the T-Trust Union, and last year, in fiscal year 2010, there was a 0% increase in 2009, 2% the year before, 0, and the year before, 2%. So I think this is, you know, within, within reason. There are 76 employees in this bargaining unit, and this was voted, these three transfers all fund the, the city side and then the water and the sewer side, so that, that's why it's split up into three transfers. And this was approved 3 to 0, committee.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to go. Counselor Cameron.
Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, President. Interesting announcement, on December 5th, Monday at 7:00, Dr. Curble is going to give the city his entry plan presentation. Just proceeding out in 6 to 7, they're going to have a reception for people prior to the presentation, so if you'd like to be there for the reception, it'll be at 6:00, Room 118 in the high school. If you're just going to make it for the presentation, that'll be at 7:00 on Monday the 5th. Thank you.
You said that's the 5th, isn't Monday the 6th?
It is a Monday, is it the 6th? 6th, I'm sorry.
We asked you.
I thought it was the 5th.
Presentation by Dr. Curble.
Superintendent.
License and permits. Motion to remove daily vending machine requests from committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved daily vending machine requests. Second. Discussion? Counselor, opposed. License and permit committee met on this, on this request, there are five, six requests on where the boxes actually presently are. One in front of the post office, one on Pleasant Street roughly across from Unicorn, there's one at State and Liberty, a request also at the library, and two at the tannery on opposite corners, one on Water Street and one at Liberty Street. We approve this, move to approve this 3 to 0. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to go. Motion to remove yard sales amendment, Section 92, from committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve yard sales amendment.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor. License, license permit worked on this, and you have your handouts in front of you, and, and, and I could have the clerk read the entire proposed amendment. Counselor Hirsorg proposed a, an amendment originally, license permit took it upon themselves to dissect it a little bit further and go and reword it almost in its entirety. The salient points being that there will be only two such sales allowed, one sale every two months and not to exceed two days, and that there will be no cost of this permit because we thought it was fairly negligible and just a lot of work for the clerk's office. However, the fee for not having a permit has gone up, the fine, I mean, has gone up to $50 to $20. Everything else is fairly much the same, a little bit rewording for clarity, and if the clerk would, the council would like the clerk to read it, it would be on the page with the new Section 92 Yard Sales, which would be the lower one. I assume we're deleting 92 and we're going to add Section 9-2 Yard Sales, and it, it's three paragraphs, reads as follows, "Any person or charitable organization may conduct a yard sale on their own premises at intervals of not less than two months and for not more than two consecutive days after first securing a license from the city clerk. There shall be no fee for yard sale license. It shall be unlawful to conduct any yard sales without such license, and any person or organization who violates or refuses to comply with any of the provisions of this section may upon conviction be fined a sum of $50 for each offense. Each day a portion of a day that any violation is allowed to continue shall constitute a separate offense. The city clerk shall forthwith sell forward to the police department the names of approved licenses. Personal property belonging to the applicant and his immediate family, or if the applicant is a charitable organization. Then in such event, personal property donated to it shall be the only property to be sold at such yard sales." And this is new. "It shall be the obligation of the holder of a yard sale permit to remove any and all publicly displayed notices of such yard sale by 12 noon on the date immediately following the last day of such yard sale as licensed by the city. Such sign, for which a signed permit shall not be required, shall not exceed two feet wide and two feet long, and shall not be fixed to any public property nor placed in such a manner as to obstruct the view of pedestrian or vehicular traffic." Submitted, that's still submitted by Counselor Hirsorg, or submitted by?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would just like to thank the committee for, for looking at this and for doing their diligence and, and changing what needed to be changed. When I had initially looked through the ordinances back in the summer, this was something that came out to me, it hadn't been changed in, in some time, so glad to see some changes to it.
Any further discussion?
Just a question about the last, a tell size bit, shall not, signs shall not be affixed to any public property, telephone poles, public property?
They're natural goods.
Not again, unless you're fined.
So telephone poles are okay, street signs are not okay?
We have no way of enforcing private property. We have no way of enforcing private property, that's, would be already under different set of ordinances of trespassing, much like the, the shopping places are unenforceable, the speed limits, and the, the only handicap are enforceable. So the stop signs there are not enforceable, they're guidelines. We cannot enforce on private property, so since Mass Electric would have to take it upon themselves, not provide enforcement, do it ask for enforcement.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to go. That's it. Maybe with the city services?
No update other than a meeting shall be scheduled of the committee in the next two weeks, at which point it's not scheduled yet, I'll be letting everyone know, we plan to be talking about the various dog, off-leash, proposed ordinances, as well as the Woodbury Lighting Contract. But that will be circulated to councilors and to members of the community.
Planning and volume.
Nothing to report per se, but I'd like the members to know that as we're drawing to the end of our session, the number of these items are going to expire intentionally, just so that people know what's happening. The residential handicap parking ordinance may expire, although the sponsor can, we would certainly entertain a, a proposal to carry it over to the next session. Number two, the atmospheric pollution ordinance is in the same condition, the sponsor has asked to be carried over to the next session, which certainly seems reasonable. The Green Communities Order is a moot point, it will expire. The planning board report on wind energy, we've already acted upon and had it received and filed, that'll come off our agenda. The zoning ordinance will expire, as it was not voted on affirmatively by the committee or by the full council. The tree ordinance, we were willing to act on, but the sponsors wanted additional time to discuss some issues with the planning department and with Mr. Fornari, and so a joint hearing that we had scheduled with Neighborhood and City Services has been postponed to a future date. Although I haven't spoken with Counselor Hirsorg about this, I think it would be appropriate to carry this over to the next session if we can't act on it in the next two meetings. Thank you.
All in favor? All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, we are having a committee of the whole meeting on Wednesday at six o'clock in chambers on parking and the parking initiative. I anticipate that this will be the last committee meeting on that, and we'll be taking out committee at that time. Also, at this time, I'd like to start with removing item seventeen from committee, which is stop signs Carlton and Carlton, Drive and Magnolia Street.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
I move that we accept the city marshal's recommendation. In a letter to us, he has some safety concerns at the intersections of Woodland and Carlton and Woodland and Magnolia. This is actually a T intersection, so this better defines the intersection, and the minor streets having the right, yielding the right of way by way of stop sign.
Motion approved. Any further discussion?
Now this corner's two houses up from me. Woodland Street's a very wide street, there's good visual access on both sides from Carlton and Magnolia. And frankly, it seems that so many of our neighborhoods are littered with signs, do this and don't do that. We don't need additional visual pollution telling us what to do when it's patently obvious that you can either proceed on this very wide venue of Woodland Street or not. I don't see the need, we don't have a history of accidents at this corner, since the tree on the corner that formerly shaded the house on the corner where the, I forget the neighbor's name, lives, has fallen down, there aren't even any leaves around the corner that would impede someone who tried to apply their brakes and stop before making a turn. I mean, I think this is a solution in search of a problem that doesn't exist. I urge you to approve, to vote no on this.
Counselor Cronin, was the lobby committee, did you say?
It was three nothing to go with the recommendation of the city marshal.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cameron.
Thanks, Mr. President. I don't know if the marshal wanted a comment on who had proposed it, and just, I live near there as well, and on Woodland Street, there's, you start at Merrimack and you've got Walnut, Howard, Jackson, and a couple more, Dexter, Payson, and none of them have those stop signs, so I just, I mean, I'm all for getting drivers to stop because I do think it's a real problem, just not sure.
Actually, this was brought to our attention by residents up there. The fact about it being is that the streets you're talking about come onto a T with it, what we're talking about is a straight, shot straight through. So we're simply trying to be proactive here, where you'd be driving down the street and not realize you're going to intersect the street and go into the next street, which means you actually cross the street. Looking to try to prevent an accident instead of being, coming before the council and telling you there's been a fatality up there because somebody from outside the area was driving down the road, didn't realize there was an intersecting street, and went straight on through it. It was brought to our attention, went up, we looked, we verified, in fact, what they were saying is concerning, and like I said, we're looking to take and prevent versus tell you we've had accidents there.
In these instances, I tend to refer to the board counselor, so I didn't make it quite clear what your own thoughts were on this, and if I could, if you'd be so kind as to elucidate what your opinion would be.
Thank you, Mr. President. God, it's, I wouldn't call it a T intersection, it's a four-way, like a four-way intersection, and if you didn't know to stop, you would go through Magnolia and cross over to Carlton, so I think that's valid. So yes, I'm in favor of it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve a stop sign as written for the corner of Carlton and Magnolia. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
None.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Darvin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsorg.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Big ten yes, one no, nine yes. Sorry. One no, one absent, nine yes, one absent, one no, and it will be published. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. I agree with Article twenty-one, Seacoast Safari, it's a bike tour.
Second. Justice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to accept this, this is a event that's gone on for several years, it just touches on Newburyport a little bit on Water Street, and moves all the way up into Maine, they come back the same route the next day.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to go. Any else?
One more, you bear with me, will be to remove the Multiple Sclerosis Society Event Walk from town.
Second. Justice? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is just a walk using sidewalks, Marlborough High Street, Ashland, Merrimack, Water and back. It's been done before.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Counselor.
Public Utilities met and voted unanimously two to zero to approve Kendall Construction Corporation's application, and we referred it to committee because we hadn't had the application materials in front of us, but we were able to confirm that insurance, the application, and all the required references were in order, so we would ask for your approval.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to go.
That's it.
Close committee. Your report, sir. Under the oath. Okay, motion to approve.
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor? Okay. Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?
That's it.
Close committee. Your report, sir. Under the oath. Okay, motion to approve.
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?
That's it.
Close committee. Your report, sir. Under the oath. Okay, motion to approve.
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?
That's it.
Okay. Motion to approve.
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?